It is good.
Okay, we're gonna get ready to call the meeting to order. Uh, first of all, I'll thank you all again. You're taking off right out in cheer for this end of your day. Uh, get ready to start this meeting. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Heron, here. Trustee Montez.
Here.
Trustee Sierra.
Here.
Trustee Silver.
Here.
Trustee Slover.
Here.
Vice President Hill.
Here.
President Johnson.
Okay, I don't think we have any big motion for nobody to read electronically. Okay, we're standing for a moment aside. Okay, we need a motion for the pool of the minutes of October 22nd meeting.
I so moved as we approve the minutes.
Second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries. Is anyone here to address the board today? Any citizens, anybody online? Do we have one? Yes, ma'am, come up to the podium, please. State your name.
Hello, my name is Jamie Messmore.
Oh, Ms. Messmore.
Yes, I'm standing in for my husband this evening. Um, so thanks for having me. Um, good evening, um, I am here to request updates to the Mossville Soccer Complex. As someone who personally utilizes the facility three to four times a week, I have watched the field and parking lot conditions deteriorate significantly in the last few years. It's a highly utilized facility with more than 120,000 annual visitors, 30,000 of those being unique visitors. For some of them, it's their only impression of Peoria and is unfortunately a negative one. I understand that there are many competing budget priorities, but with even a minor investment, the experience for those who use the facility, whether it be regularly or intermittently, could be drastically improved. Additionally, with added maintenance, there's opportunity to utilize the space for additional activities and ultimately result in a positive economic impact for the Peoria area as has been demonstrated in neighboring communities such as Washington, Metamora, and Pekin. I understand there have already been conversations and an application of grant funding for this project. Um, so thank you for your prompt action and I look forward to the next steps in being a part of giving the thousands of Peoria kids who use the complex a safe and maintained space to be proud of. Um, and certainly did not want to squander the opportunity to address you all, um, tonight. I know there's been a lot of individual conversations. Um, so again, thanks for, um, the opportunity and your willingness to consider this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to address the board? Students request? Okay. Uh, staff reports. Secretary Director?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I don't have a lot to share, but I do want to make sure to call your attention to everybody on the horse who received a copy of, um, the buck slip we have to celebrate our new Explore More membership, which allows for an unlimited joint membership to the zoo, playhouse, Forest Park Nature Center, and Luthy Botanical Garden, other one, under one umbrella. And there are additional benefits as outlined on the back of the card. Uh, there's a QR code that we hope you will click on and check out this opportunity. It is something that people have asked for. And, uh, with some of the changes to our organizational structure at the zoo, we are now able to provide that as one option. So it has been very well received to start. Uh, we also, along with this effort, have worked on and under Jenny Swanson's leadership, uh, a joint newsletter that allows us to cross-promote across our different facilities as well. So I hope you'll take a couple of minutes and spend some time with us, but it is a great opportunity and very cost-effective for families to be able to, as it says, have one membership with unlimited adventures.
Do they buy the membership and go to all the different facilities? Does Jenny still buy individual memberships?
Those still exist, yes. This is just a value add to be able to do all those, the four things at once, and you do have additional benefits if you buy that group package. Uh huh. How many people are in a family?
Is this a family of 10 or a family of four?
It's a household.
Yeah, so with all our memberships across the district, they're by household. Um, so this package includes a family or a grandparent level. So a family would be up to two adults and all the children in the households. Um, I believe it's under 18. And then, um, for a grandparent, it's up to two adults and then all of their grandchildren that are under the age of 18. And so that is for admission to the facilities and those reciprocal benefits, which give you like 1,500 different institutions you can visit around the United States. So it's amazing.
Thank you, Jenny. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
Any other questions for? Ms. Cahill? Thank you. Uh, separate to pretend a planning.
Our monthly report is before you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Any questions for Becky, anyone?
Call morning, Sharon? Is it, what's the date for opening?
We're getting close. We had the inspection by the city, so we're getting real close. We're hoping in a few weeks we'll be in there at least. Kind of get in the feel of everything and then.
What's been the holdup? I know it's just a little today, but.
Well, it's kind of a variety of things as lead times have taken a little longer than we'd hoped for for some of the equipment as well as, like the safety netting on the second floor. It's kind of one of those things that we, we need. So anyways, it's, it's getting there. There's just a handful of little things at the end.
Going along with it. Will the restaurant open the same time as the, you know, the, the actual practice area?
So for the certificate of occupancy, it looks like the restaurant will get it first and the heating bay will be second because of that safety netting concern. So it's right on the edge.
And that's the netting that if somebody steps a little bit too far, that catches them.
Correct.
So we had to like redesign, get a bigger one or heavier duty or?
Uh, the, the engineer that had to sign off on it is from California and there was a lot of back and forth trying to make sure everyone was in agreement before they would stamp the drawings, so. Make sure that one was right.
Yeah.
Becky, I just want to say, I think you're through his apartment. I'm only going to address the number of progress how things move across the street. How long did the other, did they get?
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Any other questions of Becky? Thank you. All right, the Chief of Police?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Good evening. Believe everyone has the report. October was a busy month, kind of our, our, uh, big finish. I won't jinx anything to the end of the year, but a lot of events going on in the parks and everyone pitched in, did a great job. We didn't have any, uh, major security or police concerns, but we, we kept busy. Um, does anybody have any questions for the report that was filed? This is kind of trending slightly down, but about even year over year.
How many full-time police officers we have now?
Right now, we have three, uh, not including myself, with an opening for one more.
One more, so we have a total of four?
We'll have four full-time.
Police officers, okay.
Yes.
Chief, right now, you're doing patrol?
Not, not a lot. I do go out, I do patrol, I do respond to some things, but that's not the, it's a very small percentage of my, of my time. I'll assist especially during the daytime when we only have one officer on and we get some calls, um, that aren't necessarily urgent, but I don't really want the officers to go alone. Um, and, you know, kind of some daily fire stuff that comes up. But I do do that.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Sure. It ebbs and flows, you know, just.
Full disclosure, I saw you patrolling. I mean, I think you patrol.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do go out, I do go out. When we have problems, I like to get an eye on it. I, you know, the park is, as you guys know better than I do, is so vast, right? I'm still learning areas and even being from Peoria, you know where some parks are, but really getting deep into them and kind of learning some of the trails and some of the ins and outs. And the staff has been great in helping me out, but, uh, um, kind of learning that and understanding really the depth of some of the issues that come up. And, and we, we get a little bit of everything in the parks, right? So, um, we certainly try to address that with some, some understanding.
Sure, thank you.
Hey, anybody have any other questions for Chief?
Maybe this is last week. Have you had said, was it last week? Who was the resident?
You have to remind me which, the lagoon? Uh, so it was really an odd, yeah, it was really an odd. I'll try to make the best sense of it as I can. So a resident that lives on Prospect had someone, an unknown person, run to their door with a, at least a second-party suicide note. Said that someone gave it to them. The person had no idea what was going on, but saw an address on the note. Uh, but then the person that ran to the door snatched the note and took off running. So they didn't know what to do, so they called the police. Officers responded. We responded to the address that she saw on the note, made contact with people there. They said everyone was accounted for, there were no issues. But it was alleged that, um, it was gonna happen at, at the lagoon. And it kind of grew legs because it was on social media. Uh, so the drone was put up, the area was searched. Uh, it was really an extensive search, but it ended up being a lot of nothing. It was almost kind of a quasi swatting call, if you will. But at the end of the day, luckily, nothing came out of it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Committee reports. Um, 8A Diversity, DEI.
Thank you, President Johnson. The DEIA, um, August 19th minutes are before you. Take any comments or questions if anyone has any.
Anyone have any question?
President, just as a, um, a matter of comment, um, one thing that I like to focus on with DEIA committee, especially considering, um, a, a lot of the recent interest, is the action items section. So one thing, just to flag for the full board, I look forward to bringing it back to the board before the end of this year. Some closeout on action items, so we can get some movement specifically around the DEIA commitment document.
Sure.
So just flagging that for everyone.
Okay, thank you for that information. Okay, um, new business. For the design, we need approval for the design for the Pure Playhouse improvement?
The Pure Park District was awarded grants from the Gilmore Foundation for the renovation of Pure Playhouse Children's Museum. These funds will be used to enclose an area of the porch to allow for relocation and expansion of the Real Tools exhibit and the addition of a new grocery exhibit. Staff recommends accepting the proposal from Kramer Design and Production in the amount of $70,000 for exhibit design services for the Pure Playhouse project. But this recommendation is contingent upon, uh, review by the, the attorney. Late in the afternoon, Kevin and I spoke and there are a couple of changes to the agreement that nothing majors insurance indemnification type language. So we just wanted to make sure that that was cleared up before you guys approve it. I mean, we'd like to go ahead and have the approval, knowing that he has reviewed it and will make those changes before we get back with the architect.
Is there a motion?
So move.
A second.
Questions?
Becky, this is just for the design, right? It's not, it's not for the actual building and creation of it?
Correct, this is exhibit, um, design.
And that's for, do you know how many exhibits they're looking at or is it?
Um, there's two main ones and then several within. They just want to make sure the whole design is cohesive. This is the same designer that was involved in the original, um, building.
Thank you.
A follow-up question. Was this a voluntary, um, I'm sorry, I want to make sure that I have this. So was this a voluntary, uh, grant-funded project? Did we apply for like a capital application to the Gilmore Foundation? How do we come across this funding?
Uh, so the Gilmore Foundation provided a grant to us after conversations between, uh, when Rebecca Schuman was still here as the director. She, uh, spoke with Gilmore Foundation and she and I did a presentation to the foundation and then they, um, provided a grant with a matching element to it. And so there are also funds, uh, given to us through the Bealfelt Foundation and a member of that Bealfelt Foundation board who supported the project as well.
Got it, all right, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
9B Post-Traile Expenses Approval. Your motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries.
President Johnson, if I may, I don't think we've actually gave recognition to the, um, this gala event. So I apologize for not commenting during the comment section, but congratulations on your award that you have received as a result. Oh, okay, well, we'll, we'll be celebrating it, but nonetheless, congratulations.
Good thing it wasn't a surprise.
Ah, guys.
Thank you, you're welcome. Okay, uh, 9C. Uh, need the approval of the 2026 operator.
Okay, so before we do that, if we could do a follow-up for you about the Treewind Park Pavilion, we promised to provide some additional information. Is that okay to do that before we?
Yes, yes, that's right.
Before we put it on the rails, Miles, you put it on the wall.
Hold on just a second, one, Miles, uh, gets the stick to turn on the projector. We're pretty hot.
The high-tech, the high-tech thing.
That's the projector stick, no one else can use it for anything else.
Okay, so there were questions as part of our presentation. Uh, staff has recommended a $10 increase, uh, for rental rates tied to all shelters in the district as well as to Treewind Park Pavilion, which would increase the hourly rate from $40 to $50. Uh, there was a series of trustee, uh, questions, and so we provide some information about that as follows, which I can't see without my paper, so hold on here just a second, because that's really tiny, isn't it? Trustee. Okay, so that table.
You can't read without my.
Right, wowzers. So first, the first chart is, uh, information about the private rental numbers at the facility over the last three years. So in 2023, there were 29, it was like an eye. There were 27 private rentals. Very good, Trustee Silver, you left your glasses in the car.
No, I can see.
Okay, so you're a faraway guy. Okay, um, in 2024, there were 32 rentals and we project in 2025 that there will be 40 private rentals at the facility. You can see, well, you could, you can technically see how that compares to other facilities across the district. The orange on the bar is the private rental. So you'll see that it is fairly comparable to other facilities across the district. Uh, the blue in the Treewind line, so the Treewind is the last bar. The blue there is Peoria grown. So you'll see that that doesn't have significant impact really on the rental numbers and it is fairly comparable to other facilities across the district. Usage of Treewind, there was a question about zip codes and where, uh, users have come from. Of the total 88, there were 88, uh, individual users across the district, dis, sorry, individual households. Of those, 39 or 39.4% of the total came from 61605. Uh, the next highest group was from 6061604 with 17 users. 61614 at 14 users and then that goes down to non-Peoria area actually makes up 9% of the total, uh, and you'll see the rest of that breakdown. So it is, it is, 40% is from '05, but it does reach people in other parts of the community.
So it's safe to say over 50% of the usage comes from the Southern District?
Mm-hmm, as it should. Um, here you'll see, so we've, did I see it?
I'm surprised that you had as many from 61614 and 61615 as you, as you show there. I mean, that's not trivial.
It isn't, for sure. Um, usage of Treewind, so we project in 2025 that we will generate $8,000 worth of revenue at the facility. So that's at $40 an hour. Um, the key point here is that the cost to the district for that per rental hour, which does not include setup or tear-down and cleanup, which also incurs a cost to the district, but just the actual time that the facility is rented, because that is the most trackable number. Every hour of rental costs the district $83.87. So that, as you compare, we are generating $8,000 worth of revenue from private rentals and we anticipate that that cost to the district will be $16,774.
Just, just to make sure, point of information here. The facility we're talking about is an indoor facility that's heated and, you know, it's, it's basically got a stage there. So it's quite a bit different than our other facilities that we're talking about when we talk about pavilions. Is that right?
It is different than shelters, for sure. It is also a rental-only facility, so it is not open to the general public except for when it is being used for a rental, which is why it requires a staff person to be onsite when the facility is in use.
So you actually have to have a person there to let people in and probably shut it down at the end? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a bit expensive from that standpoint.
Yes.
But you're charging the same amount for Treewind as you do for just a regular shelter that somebody can.
We are now and we would propose that that continues, yes.
That sounds like.
Correct, no?
No, so, uh, park shelter rentals are, are different, um, a different way to rent. So, uh, basically, when you rent a park shelter, you get it for the whole day.
Is it park rental then instead of park shelter rental? Sorry, so I misspoke.
If you come and you want to have an event at a park, they don't always involve a shelter rental, but there is an hourly charge to do that because you're, in that scenario, you're making an area of the park unusable for other groups to use. So you do need to, to pay. Generally, there are ancillary, um, expenses for maintenance, extra garbage, setup, tear-down, et cetera, that go with that.
And, and that's what, that's what was gonna be $50?
That's correct.
That's the charge that's, it's not the shelter, it's the.
Correct, the shelter rental.
I'm sorry for that.
Yeah, correct.
I'm sorry for that miscommunication.
Okay. But the shelter goes along with that. You get the shelter and that, that area of the park.
At, at Treewind?
No. No, no. It's a place else. Just general.
If you, if you do a shelter rental, you, you're getting the shelter and generally the immediate area around it. For example, at many of our parks, Bradley is an example, the, the playground is just adjacent to the shelter. So there, there may be people from the public, patrons using the, the playground and, and parking lot and other areas of the park, but the shelter in that immediate space around it is reserved for you and your group. That answers your question?
I think so.
Okay. But Tree, Treewind, the pavilion is specifically the rental for the indoor portion, which is actually on the second floor of, of the facility.
Are there further questions about the Treewind piece? Or the data presented?
Do you have more data outside of this or?
Is there another data point you're interested in? I, I may.
No, I just didn't know if this was the end of your.
Yes. So this is the rationale, right? The questions were, it, or the question or the, was, is it underutilized? And our argument would be that no, it is not. Um, because of the cost associated with that, it is and has been the directive for staff to, to try to address that cost recovery to some extent. We are still at, for every dollar received, we are paying at least a dollar into that rental every time and that is of concern for us, uh, as we look at how to manage that and how to make this, um, sustainable. Um, and, and I, I believe that because, certainly our, our position is that because of not only that piece, but also the fact that it is being used and it is not a barrier, that as we look at renting a park is 40, $50 an hour, we believe that that should at least be comparable. It, the $50 makes it comparable to rentals at Procter and other locations as well. So we don't believe that that is cost prohibitive and certainly if you look at a market analysis across the community, it is still priced well below other resources available to people for a rental.
Can you dive more into the, the commentary as to the directive that staff has received to address?
Well, I think we have always, we have tried over the last several years to build a model where we are not subsidizing events like this, that tax dollars, it is difficult to argue that tax dollars should be used for private events like this. While I understand the argument or the, the feeling that it is a service, that is still a distinction from our standpoint versus a program and a dollar-for-dollar match of every rental feels like that is not a sustainable model for us and it would not be something that we would recommend. If the board chooses to say and gives us a directive to back that down, you can see from the numbers that it is not a material impact to the budget, but it does, it does set a, a tone or for a push that we, we will continue to fall behind. Those are 25 numbers. As you look at 26, that $83.87 will surely increase. And so we just continue to widen the gap between the two. At a point when our budget is tighter and more difficult, that is something that becomes even more difficult to sustain. It also is a mechanism of the fact of when we are doing that, we have to honor the fact that we are pulling people from other locations as well. And so it has a higher cost to us than just the $83.87 because those are hours that won't be worked in other locations, which, given the strain on the budget, we can't backfill that with other people either in order to, to work on that list of things to do across the district.
So doesn't Treewind have a manager already at, at onsite?
They do, but he very rarely, I mean, he is not available to work these rentals. They are being, they are being supported in the evenings and on the weekends, which is why that cost is so expensive to the district. It could be him, but it is still expensive when we think about that cost per hour to have our small parks crew supporting these events. And, and I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't offer rentals, but we need to ref, we understand, we need to honor that continuing gap that is, that is increasing between actual cost and the rental fee being charged.
So even if you raise this to $50 an hour, if I do the math, that's gonna be $10,000 projected revenue, you're still in the hole.
Mm-hmm, and we're, and, and there is a value that to us, there is, we have to figure out what is the appropriate gap, right? We're not gonna make that up, nor does that make sense for us to say that we should charge $85 an hour. But we do need to reflect that where we have the opportunity and, and the, the position to say we want to keep things straight across the board, to make that jump when others are making that jump or to stay behind, all we're doing is really widening that gap if we don't take those steps together. Because if this, if this is not something that's happening across the board, it is even less likely that we're going to increase those fees.
Yeah, and, and finally, I would say, I have the opinion that things like park rentals should be considered a park product and not a service. And it's services where we can give people discounts. I think for the products, you need to set a price for the product and that's what it is. Be consistent across the board.
Ron, Ron, are you creating a synonymous term of discount with a subsidy?
Um, yeah. I think.
I think, I think you're talking about scholarships, right?
Yeah, things like scholarships or.
We provide.
Yeah.
Special allowances for people who have special needs.
Exact, yeah, people.
I'm, I'm not tracking. Um, I think if you, if you're saying that a discount is equivalent to any subsidy, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that philosophy. And the reason why I wouldn't agree with that philosophy.
It's a matter of semantics.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's semantics because subsidy refers to a pot of money that the taxpayer is contributing to and our application, our philosophy of that subsidy is based on the, the feedback and, um, engagement that we have with the constituency and the expertise of the staff in balancing that. And that's what we're trying to do here.
Sure.
And so, and that's why I say I don't think it's the same. I don't, I don't think we're discounting anything. We're trying to figure out where do we meet the community? And I think that this conversation is especially important when you have the, the median income And I think that this conversation is especially important when you have the, the median income. And anyone correct me, but a median income of twenty-four thousand dollars in the six one, six zero, five zip code, ten dollars means a lot when it comes to discretionary income. And, and that's why I wanted to have the conversation. And so I, you know, I, I say all this to say that, you know, I think we have to be extremely careful when we look at indirect cost, especially when we talk about personnel and time and things of that nature. I think once, if we dive into that rabbit hole, we'll find out that we are subsidizing at a very large rate a lot of things throughout the district. At, at, at levels in which probably would raise larger conversation about how we do everything that we do across this district.
So generally, I would note that that is in your budget book, that we talk about a per, per participant subsidy, or a per visit, or in parks, a per acre subsidy. So we do talk in those terms. And, and I, I agree. I, I also note that there is the opportunity to set a rate, and then as we do across all of our programming, offer discounts, which is what we do do in the rental space. It's not a scholarship, but it is a discount, especially for certain groups or nonprofits who are using the facility. And we do that in our parks as well. There's an, there's a policy around that to help with accessibility and to help programs and events get off the ground. And so there are, there are always wiggle room, but there is less so if we don't continue to increase with some of the market share costs. Again, we just need direction. This can't be the reason that a fifty-three million dollar budget doesn't get passed, right? So we need to be able to have the seven of you vote on a direction, whether it's forty dollars or fifty dollars, and then have us move forward. It is not material, material to the point where we would have to take the budget back and revise it, but we do need direction as, tied to that fees and charges chart so that we can move this forward.
Emily, is that the only charge there for that facility is, is the forty dollars an hour? Are there any other additional charges to the renter?
There may be.
Fees. Are there any other additional fees?
Yes, sir. There's a hundred and fifty dollar deposit when you make the rental, and that's refunded to the renter if there aren't any damages or, or other fees to.
Okay, so that's, so is that deposit and then the hourly rate?
Yes, sir. So, a, as an example, if, if you came in and said, I would like to rent the pavilion for four hours, it would be the, the four hours times hourly rate plus the deposit would be paid in full at that time in the transaction. And then if there wasn't any reason to assess fees for the deposit, that would be refunded to the patron after the rental.
Okay, yes. All right. Is anybody got any other questions we can get on? Yeah.
Yeah, could you just clarify rentals in the other, other rentals fees? Because I'm sort of gotten lost now, whether.
I apologize.
Everybody's fifty dollars or whether.
Yeah, shelters are per day, and that amount is one twenty-five, Monday through Thursday.
Yeah, I'm just.
One fifty Friday and Saturday.
Facility rentals that.
Facility rentals, do you want to run through those?
Are they the same?
We'd have to look them up.
They're different in different facilities.
They're different in different locations.
Because there's going to be different.
A different amenities available to you.
Right.
Right, and that, that cost to the district is different per facility. Right, if it is an open facility where staff is already at the front desk or in that location, that cost to the district is lower. So I know for sure that the Procter Recreation Center there, hourly rental rate is fifty dollars an hour. Could you pull them up? You want to just do that for her, please?
If you look in your book, starting on page one ninety-nine, the fees and charges section.
Could you just read some of them off?
Sure.
Getting that book is.
Yeah, for those that, that want to look, they are, they are listed out in rental order. So athletics, a soccer field rental is twenty dollars.
But indoor, I just, the indoor stuff.
Indoor facilities.
I'd just like to come, have a little comparison in my brain.
Yeah, there's. They do by the day. That's not really comparable.
Nature Center in Tonny Oaks are seventy-five an hour.
Say that again.
Nature Center, Forest Park Nature Center in Tonny Oaks are seventy-five an hour for those buildings. Emily referenced Procter Center is fifty dollars an hour.
What's like the recreation center plus rent?
Fifty dollars.
What if somebody wanted to rent this room? They can't, okay.
Yeah, Lake, Lakeview Recreation Center.
Well, is there another room to rent in this?
Is there another room to rent? Okay, no, never mind.
No one was here at all?
So if we can.
Okay, that, that helps. It's.
To piggyback off this stuff, so let's look at Procter, for instance. Same rental rate hourly. And I agree with Emily, this isn't something to hold up a, a budget, material or non-material, right? It's very low. Just trying to understand philosophy. And so Procter, for instance, at the same rate, would you say that the average renter or the renter have more access to amenities, entertainment with doing, or any other additional offerings or benefits that would be offered at Procter rather than Treewind Park? And if so, what are those differences? I'm looking at Matt because he's been speaking, but anyone?
Scott's your person for this one.
Yeah, so, I mean, they would get access to the gym, and they might get some, like, playground equipment, like balls and scooters and something like that. But otherwise, most of the rentals that she has are in the lower basement or upstairs in the, in the auditorium, and it's really just tables and chairs that they have access to.
So the big key difference for Treewind is actually the access to the full kitchen. That is a, that is a major selling point for that rental, to have access to that full cooking kitchen that you don't have at Procter.
Access to what?
The kitchen.
The kitchen.
The kitchen.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
So what are we looking at with the proposed increase with the Treewind Park rental?
Ten dollars.
Four hundred.
Goes from forty to fifty.
Four hundred dollars.
So forty to fifty, which would be the same that we do for the park rentals.
So, and you, over the twelve months, what does that come out to be in the event that we get the forty rentals? Four, is that what you were just saying, four hundred up?
Ten times forty.
Well, that's per hour. So if you did.
It could be a hundred and sixty, hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I believe the, the average hourly rate from twenty-three to current day was around five hours generally for your average rental time.
Got it.
You know, haven't we always, as an agency, tried to make programs and services affordable in low-income neighborhoods? I mean, I hear the word sustainable, but for the amount that's being charged and the amount that's being made for the agency, you're not really talking about sustainable. You're trying to ma, trying to make it equal in some way to what we charge in other places. But are we going to stop providing that service in low-income areas? I mean, then, and if that's true, does, are we going to look at the chain, the charges that we make at Procter Center? Or at Logan Center? Or are we going to continue to make these affordable?
I guess I just.
Steve, no, I, I was just going to say, I, I think the due diligence has been done, right? And, you know, what we've seen is that we're looking at a competitive, you know, product, you know, with a comparable operation to Procter, and we've been looking at it as like, it is being subsidized. It's almost a one-to-one, you know, subsidy for what's going on in order to be able to take into consideration what you're saying, is that we're going to be doing things to help people who need some help. And so I think, right now, we kind of beat this drum a lot, and I think it's probably time that we look at making a vote on this thing.
Beat what drum?
This drum about what we're going to do with Procter and Treewind.
Well, you know, I don't think we went on this enough last time, and that's why we're here this time. We didn't settle this last time. Well.
Difference.
You know, we, we treat subsidizing, the word sub, I, I've heard that last week, I heard it this week, and it's, it's used like a bad word, but you know, we, we collect tax money from citizens to provide services, and, and you know, Treewind is not the last place that we provide subsidies to, and we could go, you can go down the line.
But what, what would you want to call it? An assistance? So what, what would you call it? Not a subsidy, what would you call it? What would be a better word?
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm just saying how it's being used in this particular case.
Wrong word, then we probably ought to use the right word, and is that assistance, you know, to disadvantaged areas, whatever it might be. But I think what we're showing is that there is a assistance being applied here, and that we ought to be looking at trying to, you know, just get this one, you know, basically done and, and see what we can do to the next thing we need to worry about.
I do want to say on our behalf that subsidy is not being used as a negative word. It is a reality that without tax dollars or district resources being applied to this, that service would not be made available. So it is, that is across the board.
There were many other services that wouldn't be available without subsidy, no matter where in the district.
It is, that's part of our reality, right? Your job as trustees is to determine how you want out, how you want district resources to be allocated. So you have the bucket of tax dollars that come to the district. Your charge is to evaluate how we have allocated those tax dollars across the multitude of things that we provide to our residents and people who, whether they live here or work here or play here. You are right that this is not material. It is just an effort, though, to try to keep things tracking together. And as, as we move things up, fifty dollars is still very affordable. But I, I want to be clear that it is not subsidy, we're not using that word in a negative way. The reality is, if there's another word we should be using, we can. It is the application of tax dollars to that. I could stand here and tell you that we subsidize the zoo at one point seven million dollars, and that is equally should be evaluated by you to determine, is that the best use of our tax dollars for a series of services being offered?
If, if I can jump in, and then I want Steve to finish his point, but I want to echo what Steve's saying to both you and Mark. Steve is not suggesting that we use a different word when it comes to tax subsidy. Correct, jump in at any point.
That wasn't, that wasn't my point at all.
I hear him saying, and what I'm picking up on as we're talking about this also, is that our philosophy and application of tax subsidy can sometimes be used as the ju, a justification why we should do more or do less when it comes to our dollar.
In particular areas.
And so I'm, I'm not, I, I just think, to tighten up, right, on, on the language, it's not that tax subsidy is wrong. Like I said last time, if we wanted to perform everything at market, at, at that point, there's no, there's no point for a park district, because our job is, as a tax-collecting agency, is to set off some of the, the, to make it more accessible, to use Steve's terms. And so, Steve, I'm really interested in, in you continuing, because I think my bottom line when it comes to this is that, again, this is a non-material item in our budget. At the end of the day, four hundred dollars for one rental in terms of where we're netting is not going to make or break the park district. We're operating at a, what, thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-eight million dollar budget, right? We've just seen the generosity of this community, just in one thing that we've adopted tonight with the seventy thousand dollar donation. And so if we wanted to make up that four hundred dollars somewhere, I'm sure that we can get creative as a team. And so, so Steve, I think what you're saying and what I agree with is, if we made a decision as a board to say, stay at the rate of twenty twenty-five and next year's budget, or it, it wouldn't be the end of the world. Is that what I'm picking up on?
Well, you know, I have strong feelings that, of making a turn away from providing services in certain areas that need the consideration. But no, my, my, my world will not turn upside down because of the, the vote, but I, I, I think it as a this kind of debate for the agency that I know is different than what I've seen. We're making that turn away. We're, we're looking at making everything pay a little bit more, and it's not necessary. And, and in some cases, we've always been able to juggle from one area to another area to make sure we are able to provide those services. And you can do that in a fifty-three million, fifty million dollar budget.
I guess you got to get to the point where, how much of it are you going to juggle? And how much of it are you going to put into subsidies? I think what we're looking at right now is a fair proposal that basically is very competitive and is providing the kinds of things that people need at, you know, Treewind for a rental in a really nice manner, where you've got a kitchen, you've got an indoor facility at fifty dollars an hour. I don't believe that's an inordinate amount, and I don't think this is going to be, you know, you know, that con, you know, that, that substantial of a burden on anybody. No.
Certainly not on the park district budget.
Joyce.
I mean, on, in that particular line.
I'm sorry, Joyce.
Yeah, I mean, we saw the data that at least half of the rentals are not from the, the area. In fact, some are rentals by people who don't live in the area, even in the district.
Less than half is from people not in the Southern District.
About half.
Okay.
So that was what I believe I said. And we know that right now, we're charging more at Procter per hour than we have been. And so I'm hearing this as, let's be equitable and get it so that it's the same. And then the result is that there's less of a, um, word subsidy per hour for a private event, not a program that we're providing where we want, we want to make it possible for everybody to come. I mean, we're not there to provide rental space for birthday parties. We're there to provide the sub, the main subsidy for the programming that we might offer there. It's sort of how I divide it up in my brain. So I would just like to move forward, and I don't know if I can call a question. I don't know if we have a motion in a second. I sort of lost track.
Just to clarify, can we call a question on, on something that's not a formal agenda item?
Right, it's not, uh, this is part of the budget, though, this process. It's not one item.
The first question would be if, if there's more, I guess, to discuss at this juncture.
No.
This is a demotion, I mean, the motion on the floor would be the budget.
Modification to that one.
Kevin?
If, if there's nothing further to discuss, the next logical step is to vote on the budget. There's been a motion.
There hasn't been a motion.
Not yet.
But if, if there's nothing to discuss, by who? The staff, the board, or both?
I think it'd be both.
Okay, so I, I, I have more to discuss. So thi, this is my thing. Tree, the deep six one, six zero, five is not the same as the entire South Side. And anyone who thinks that it is, I would encourage you to go down to the South Side of Peoria. The, again, you have the median income of six one, six zero, five being twenty-four thousand dollars annually. Not one person in this room is making that money. So we can talk from a, a, a position of privilege when we have this conversation. And that includes me as well. At the end of the day, you know, between last week and this week, I've floated this conversation very minimally, but floated it nonetheless. And ten thou, or ten dollars an hour may not seem like a lot to some people, but it adds up. The truth of the matter is, Joyce, I think you're, I think you're, you make a great point, right? We're talking about an equitable philosophy as it pertains to our rentals across the district. I get that. Equitable does not always mean the same. And so just because we have this rate at Procter does not mean we have to have the same rate at Treewind Park. That, I mean, that at least, that's my understanding of equitable philosophy. In addition to, all of the rentals at Treewind Park Pavilion, and I'm sorry, I lost my glasses, but if this chart says that all of the rentals at Treewind Park Pavilion is solely for a private group, I find that hard to believe. I, I attended several, um, uh, public events last year.
Because they're provided for free. They're not included in this list.
Perfect. I appreciate that clarification, but what, what I was getting at is, in the event that some of this information did pertain to a, a, a group incurring cost, I find it hard to believe that those doors aren't open to the larger public. We all have different philosophies when it comes to a service and program provided or a rental provided. I get that. I think my ask is, and, and in the same effort of Joyce, not to, to end the, the conversation on the budget, but as to the topic of Treewind Park Pavilion, if this is a non-material budget item, I don't see any harm. And honestly, I thought we were going to wait to have this conversation, but if we're having it now, I don't see any harm in us maintaining the hourly rate that we have for twenty twenty-five. And if it will make it easier for everyone, if we could just go across the horseshoe and say yes or no to maintaining the twenty twenty-five rate. And if it will make it easier for everyone, if we could just go across the horseshoe and say yes or no to maintaining the 2025 rate, right? So forty dollars an hour compared to fifty dollars an hour, um, I'm fine with that. And so my, my position, very clearly, you can't treat the deep South Side as the same as the community around Tree, or Procter Center. Incomes are totally different. In addition to that, I understand that, Scott, that the amenities and offerings may be minimal in terms of difference for rental. The experience between Treewind Park Pavilion and Procter Center are absolutely different. From the on-staff presence at Procter Center, to the variety of recreations, whether that be skate, playground equipment, to the mobile playground ma, or playground or recreation equipment. There's a, there's a vast amount of things that are offered at Procter Center that are not at Treewind Park, um, as well. And so we can't treat that as apples and oranges either. And so to end all, be all, my preference, especially as the Southern District representative, is to maintain the 2025 forty hours, um, forty dollar hourly rental fee, especially because it will have no material impact to our budget. And then if, at a later time, well within the authority of this board, if we want to readjust or increase, then we'll do that. But right now, there's no harm.
So I just want to address one of the things that Steve brought up with, you know, why are we running this as a business and trying to make a profit and all that? So why stop at Treewind then? Why not keep all? If you're going to keep park rentals at forty dollars an hour, let's keep them at forty dollars an hour and not raise them for anything.
I'm okay with that. Guys.
I don't, well, I don't think, I don't think they're all priced the same. Like they're
It says park rentals, forty dollars, going to fifty dollars, Treewind Pavilion, forty dollars, going to fifty dollars.
What did we do, you know?
Two hundred, down, put the bottom.
Park package? Any.
I'm looking at perfect. How are we perfect?
I just, I wanted to, uh, I guess throw in my thoughts. Because I do, I understand, I guess, both sides of this discussion in terms of keeping it on pace with everything else across the district. But I really defer to trustee Sierra. As the Southern District trustee, I trust his, um, understanding of his constituents more intimately. And I think what I, or I know, what I hear is that we can absorb that cost. We can absorb it through a subsidy. And I think especially at, at a time such as this, if we can absorb it and it's not going to make a difference to our pockets, why put that burden on our constituents if we don't need to? So I would support keeping it at forty. And my trustee Sierra said, if we want to change that, we can. But it isn't going to make a huge difference in our, our budget, our programming and what we can offer. And I see nothing wrong with keeping it where it is, especially if it's recommended by trustee Sierra.
Thank you.
The trustee in the Southern District.
And, and just to, my final words is, yeah, I think it's easy for us to talk about fifty dollars an hour. We look at fifty dollars in a different light than what the people in the area that live around.
Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, at this point.
I think staff is looking for direction, though.
Attorney, attorney, they have a recommendation for how to move the motion forward.
I think President Johnson was getting there.
Well, that's what I wanted to find out. How do we, you know, because it, it appears that there's some differences on, on that one item in the budget, correct? There's some difference on that one item. Now, do we go back into the budget and change that, or do we make a vote? Or how do we proceed?
I think the most efficient way to address that would be when a motion is made and seconded to approve the budget, that motion would include any proposed modifications to the budget. And that is how we've done it in the past. That's what I was thinking, so I've been with Emily on. And, and there may be multiple modifications to the budget as presented. So I think it would be efficient to discuss all of those and then address it at the end of discussion on the budget presentation and input from everyone as to any modifications they'd like to the budget presentation. And then we can either make one large motion, or we could certainly break those up if there may be differences of opinion at that time.
Okay, so when that, so we haven't done anything with the budget?
There's been no motion or second to approve the budget, so there's currently no motion.
So if we did want to make a modification to the budget, that would be the time to do that on this item.
With, with a motion to approve the budget, correct? For which modification?
So President Johnson, can I move to approve the budget with the modification of the Treewind Park Pavilion, maintaining at the forty dollars? Yep, um, with the Treewind Park Pavilion hourly rental rate maintaining at the forty dollars an hour rate.
One second.
Question?
Well, are we talking about approving the, the budget then?
Yes.
Okay. With the modifications of the budget. Right, right, and, okay. I, I just want to say something about the budget before we approve the budget. Because I still feel the same way I felt last week about the, uh, the surplus that's, and I don't, clearly, I wouldn't have anything against having a surplus. I mean, I understand how, why it's being proposed and how it will be used in the future. And I think that's the saving grace, is that it will be used, as mentioned previously, for golf programs, right? It'll be
Not just golf.
No, it's, it's whatever.
Okay, so it won't be put, I thought I understood that it might be directed back at golf programs, no?
I thought the surplus was coming from the golf.
The surplus that's being developed.
It will stay in the golf fund. Per policy, any surplus that is generated will stay in the golf fund. So it will support future golf, uh, projects or programming. It will also, it, it, golf does not have its current fund reserve balance as directed by policy. So it will stay in that fund to get it to a healthy position per policy, which is a directive of the board that we are to provide you with ways to get a fund to its reserve position. So this is one of the ways that that is being proposed to get us to there.
But that's part of the golf revenues, isn't it?
Correct, the golf revenues are staying in the golf fund.
Stay there, right, okay.
So it doesn't have to be in a enterprise fund to be directed back into golf, then?
Well, if you're, if I understand this correctly, if the money is going to go in and save golf, then that's money we don't have to spend from other sources on golf. And that, so that frees up money we could use for the Peoria Playhouse, or the Riverplex, other stuff, right?
That's for golf revenues.
See, the things that, the thing that I struggle with here is that we've always had, I mean, how many years? It's been four years, it's going to be four years now, that we have had surpluses. The twenty-one, was it twenty-one that we had? Two million, twenty-two, something similar.
We've never budgeted a surplus now in those years.
No, we've never budgeted surpluses. That's my point, is that we've always hit these surpluses. We always hope that we come out at the end with some type of surplus. I mean, not reckless spending, but, and not cutting services, but coming out at the end with, with, with some amount of surplus that we can put away for any day. Why aren't we doing this here? Particularly because we've never had a golf learning center like the one we have right now. How do we know the operations? How do we know really what the costs are going to be and what the use is going to be? I mean, we're not even having truly any kind of what I would call a shakedown cruise, where you know, you, you, you go through your problems, you go through your successes, and at the end of it, you look backwards.
But, but, Steve, I might, I might say that we're not going to really know that for another year.
No, we won't really.
A shakedown cruise would not get us to the point where we're going to understand what we're going to make or what we're not going to make. I mean, we'll get a better idea of how the operation runs, but as far as the financials on it, you're, you're not going to get there from this. And I guess the thing that you're looking at with the surplus, this was a surplus that they were rejecting out of the golf learning center, that they would put back into the golf program so that we don't have to subsidize it quite as much as what we might right now with tax dollars. And so none of these things are where we're basically, you know, putting surplus in our, you know, back pocket and saying, hey, we're in great shape. We're saying, this is something we're going to use for the future, and it's not something that we're going to basically take and squander away someplace else. It's one where I think that we've got the right kind of ideas as far as how we do our funding. And so we need to get the golf program back to where it should be for what the fund balances are versus what we plan on spending. And this is one way to do that. So, and, and again, we don't know, because this is all projected surplus, right?
Yes.
This, this, there's nothing that says that we're going to actually get this. This is going to say, boy, we hope that our projections are right. And if they are, then this is going to put us in a much better place. If they're wrong, then we're going to have to figure out how to accommodate that, and then we're going to have to go back, you know, basically, you know, figure out. So everything works together. I mean, everything works individually, but hopefully everything works together. And that's the way the budget's put together, is that we basically have the ability to stretch in one area to help support, you know, something in another area. And so I think
Well, not in this case, this is going back into golf.
So golf, yeah, trustee, trustee Montez, if you look at page one sixteen, there's multiple places where this shows in the book. But if you look at page one sixteen, we are actually assigning tax to the fund to do just what you're talking about, to be sort of that safety net or that buffer. If the cruise doesn't turn out how you think it will, there is, there are some tax dollars being applied to that fund to help to support that. So those are, those are either going to help us with the balance, or they're going to go back in and invest into golf in the future. So this is One sixteen, which is the first page in the golf fund tab. So this is not just projected revenue in a way that is irresponsible. We did put, and, and we had a conversation about applying some tax subsidy to this fund to be that safety net. Because as you've said, it is a, it is our best estimate at what we believe that the golf learning center can do in 2026.
Well, I understand, I don't think, I'm not saying it's irresponsible. To me, the, the conversation we just had about Treewind and the conversation about running a surplus are connected in this way. In that if, the mentality of how we have provided our services up to this point start to change. When we started talking about making things sustainable, when we, I mean, making everything sustainable, when we talk about, um, running surpluses instead of providing the services, it changes the mentality of a public service agency that's supported by tax dollars. That the, the reason that we do our work, everybody in this room, we've all gotten into this business because we believe in public service. But when we start working to develop a profit, when profit is the end and not service, it changes our mentality as staff and as an agency. I believe that, I believe that firmly.
I don't, I don't see any of it, I don't see any of this in that manner. I think sustainability is very good. I think sustainability gives you the chance to continue being able to offer programs at subsidized levels or whatever kind of level you want to say it is, that's going to basically help people in the long term. And most of our programs are already in a position where it's part of the things that's being paid out of our tax dollars. So what we're saying is if we're going to generate some income that we can use to offset some of the things that we might have to take out of, you know, taxes in the future, that's not a bad thing.
But we've always done that.
But sustainable, yeah.
Now that it's, but we've changed it before, it, that wasn't our goal. Now it is our goal to make money.
I don't think there's anything in here that says this is a goal.
I don't think that's the case. Uh, first of all, I'm sorry, we, we're going to have to, uh, make a decision, a motion has been made. Uh, Ms., um, Ross, uh, now I'm, I'm going to have to go back a little bit here. I see what you're saying, trustee. I do understand what you're saying. You're thinking we're making more money now because we got these reserves. And because we got the reserves, we cutting services, basically, is what you're saying. Now, I remember when we first started out on this journey in 2017, before you got on the board, this partnership was in a very bad shape financially. Now, I have to, I have to bring that back. And because of the, because of the work that the staff had to do, some of the cuts that we had to make, unfortunately, we didn't like to make those cuts. Covid hit us also. That wasn't very good. And the staff had to really make some hard decisions, and the board at that time. We all had to make some very hard decisions to get to this point. And I of all, uh, am strongly, uh, pro services. I really am. I, I want to do that, but all at the same time, I, I want to make sure our park board district is also financially solid. I don't want to go back to where we was, uh, when we first came, when I first got on board, as, as I became president. So I get it. I really understand what you're saying, that you think we're making a profit. This practice does not make profit. There's a lot of things that the staff has done in the community, particularly on the six one six oh five, that I know personally that they've done to encourage those individuals to, uh, be able to participate in our programs, help out with some of their, uh, services with, uh, associations down there that are working with the people to have better lives. Now, this, this, this park district, executive director and the, our finance person, superintendent has, uh, they've done things. They've made, uh, chances for our, um, the scholarships that we offer also. We've done a lot, we've even changed the scholarship so people don't have to jump through hoops anymore. Uh, I know for a fact, because I was, I'm just like you were. I was in your position on the South Side. So I know exactly, I've been there a lot of years, and what you're saying is on point, it really is. So yes, I'm not, I, I can't, I understand, and I really appreciate your, your, your courage that you want to do and, and what you're saying. But we also, also have to make sure that this partnership is solvent financially. Because I can't help anybody if I ain't got no money. We can't, we just can't do it. And we ain't got no money, we just can't help nobody. And I want to help people in the park, this has been, I know we've done more, I just ain't said a lot. But Emily has really done a lot in terms of helping people, uh, on the South Side, particularly, more so probably than, you know, a lot of other people. And I, I have to say that honestly, because she really has, and our superintendent. So, and yes, the, the kids, we were concerned about swimming, you know, how much they had to pay to go swimming and all of those things. And I know that, that money is not there. Even to attend our zoos, they want to go and go to the zoo and pay those prices. Everybody, like you said, don't have that kind of money, like they do in other areas. But we do, we, we've done things to let people into the zoo. Now, we have to let them get in, let the kids get in and, and pro, and, and get into the zoo. We did things where they can play basketball. Sometimes they didn't have the money. But we don't talk about those things that you've got, that this partner has done. So I just want to make that clear, that we're not just trying to have all these reserves and, because we cutting services. Well, we would like to see more improved services, but we, we, we got some major issues. You know, over, like I said, we got five million dollars, uh, that you have to try to figure out what we're going to do with. But fourteen to fifteen million dollars, uh, projects, that we got to try to figure out some kind of way to make this work. Right now, we facing, uh, uh, we need to get some irrigation out here at, uh, there, 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 there are people there want irrigation out at the, um, Mossville. So these are some major issues we have coming. And I get it, I understand what you're saying, I really do. But I don't think we're doing that much cutting so that we can have this real, all this pot, power money.
Well, I'm not accusing anybody of
Well, no, but, but I get where you're going with this. I do, I understand exactly what you're saying, I really do. And I think everybody around this board, that's what you're saying. But we, we, we got to be realistic. We got the zoo, we got the, uh, we coming up with, we got to do something over here at the skating rink. You know, we got a lot, we, we, we really do have a lot of major dollar issues coming our way. So I, I, I don't want you to think that we're, that the park district is, I don't believe that they're, they're doing a lot. Because I'm looking at what we did before, you know, we came on the board and what we went through. We, we had the good times back then, but right now, the good times is, we got to start trying to figure out what we're going to do so that we can continue to have the good times. I want us to continue to help our people in this entire park district and that we can continue to be the great partnership that we are, that we know we are. I'm not saying that we are, we are the great park district in this community. And I'm looking at other park districts and some of their budgets and some of the things they're going through. But I get that insight, because I could see that, because I'm in, in that circle. And we're doing very well, and I want to continue, for us to continue to do very well. So I don't know, if anybody have any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, um, just a thought that, uh, in many ways, I am pleased that there is this, um, surplus put in, because this is a new project, right? This is totally unknown. How is this, you know, is the budgeting, you know, I know they've, the staff has said they've been as conservative as they can in terms of expenses and revenue, um, and this is showing a, a surplus. Because there's going to be error, one way or the other. Or maybe it'll just come out even, I don't know. But it's sort of comforting to But it's sort of comforting to think we've got a little cushion in there with the best estimating we can do so that next year we're not looking at cutting other services because we're having to dig into more subsidies. So I, I think it's a prudent thing for us to be doing. And I don't agree that we're, that when you look to be sustaining, that that means that you are then looking to take away programs or minimize programs. Because I said this last, last time, last meeting, that it's a struggle for a government entity and not for profit. You, you aren't going to survive if you don't make some sort of profit. You have to be able to sustain yourself because if you keep losing money, you go out of business. So it's that tug and pull. But I'm, I'm actually glad that we've been able to be confident enough to put in a slight surplus.
Just a slide.
It is, yeah. But I mean, at least there.
Do we have any other questions? Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is.
If, if I want to amend the motion, do we do that after we go into the process? Or what do we do right now? Or do we do that right now?
Depends how you want to amend it.
I'd just like to amend the motion so that we go back to our original budget proposal and say that we should vote on that.
There's a, there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor which was seconded. You can ask the individual who made the motion if they would like to amend their motion. It would be their right to determine whether they would like to amend it or not.
Okay. And I don't think that's going to happen, so.
Not this time, next time.
Okay.
But if I can, I just want to say thank, thank you for entertaining my motion, President Johnson and the full board. I just want to remind this board that one year ago, it takes confident conversations like Steve's trying to have right now. Because one year ago, we proposed cutting summer camp at Riverplex. And this board reinstituted that. And it was a smart decision because we see this year we're expanding it in our next year's budget. So it takes conversations like Steve's talking about. But, but yes, my, my motion stands. I'm not amending it. And so I'll go ahead and call the question so we can get this thing rolling.
Okay.
We have to vote to call the question, don't we?
What? Are you, are you just asking, are you suggesting that we move forward with the vote? Are you making a motion to call the question? Because that's a whole.
You're asking the president to call the vote.
Thank you. Yeah, Joyce.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I want to do it.
Not offended.
No, I'm not.
So motion made, seconded. Are we ready for roll call?
Roll call.
Sorry, could you just remind me the motion again since?
So I, I'll, I'll make it quick. No, you're fine. I moved to approve the 2026 proposed budget with the amendment of modifying the Treewin Park Pavilion rental rate, hourly rental rate to $40 an hour. Reagan, or Vice President Hill, second.
Thank you. No problem.
Roll call.
Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
No.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
No.
Trustee Slover?
No.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Now, did you know what that?
I think we did.
Yeah, we did.
It was the amendment.
It was the amendment. Now, do you understand, I, I don't think everybody's clear on it. Do you understand what the amendment is on it? What the, what the amendment was, Trustee?
It wasn't really an amendment. I guess it was a motion with, with the suggestion.
I voted against the policy.
I don't think you know what you're talking about.
Wait a minute, okay. You vote against the policy? Okay.
Of having a surplus?
Of the surplus.
He voted against the surplus.
And that's why I just said that. I didn't mean to say that at charge. I do apologize. President, I appreciate you for getting some clarification because there's some varying opinions right now. I think we would get some, or we would benefit greatly from hearing from Attorney Day on what we just voted, voted on.
You, you voted to approve the budget with one modification, the modification you had requested. So the entire budget as presented, with the exception of that modification, has been approved by the full board.
It's done deal. With that modification. Okay, all right. For the operating budget, it has been approved. Okay. We're going to move on to 9D, the Capital Improvement Plan presentation.
Yes.
We want to.
Yep, that's okay. So tonight, we have a presentation for you. You can see the goals of the presentation tonight. Becky is going to walk through with her team the highlights of a very productive 2025. We're also going to talk about then the strategic efforts that we have taken to date to put us in a position to address the, the many different capital projects that certainly have been highlighted in our strategic plan and in other places. We, we know what's coming in the next several years. And so it is important for us to talk about where we've been and then also talk about where we could go. And that includes an overview of what a capital improvement plan can look like, the elements that are included in a robust one. And then we will talk about next steps and process milestones to get us to not only a capital budget for 2026, but also a longer term plan that meets some of the criteria that we believe we should have in place to help support the long-term efforts of the district tied to capital improvement. Becky, you want to start us?
Sure. Before we review the capital projects that we've worked on this year, I'd like to ask planning staff to come forward and introduce themselves, please.
Hi, everyone. Mike Freeburg. Good evening. Sorry. Mike Freeburg. I am a longtime planner. I've been with the district 24 years and I'm currently the land manager.
Hello, I'm Mary Harden and I've been with the park district 18 years now.
Hello, everyone. My name is Spencer Wilson. Been with the park district for seven months, planner one and contractor diversity specialist.
Hello. Hello, everyone. I'm Yogi and I have been in the, in the park district since seven months.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to run through some of the different projects that we've worked on this year. First one would be, there's several projects over in Glen Oak Park, but just highlight a couple of them. We have the new inclusive restroom and shelter, which hopefully will be opening in the spring of next year. We have the squirrel house upgrades. That's a little building that's adjacent to the playhouse. Next slide.
What did you do to the squirrel house?
The squirrel house or monkey house. I've heard it called both over the years.
Yeah, I know right where it is. Because what, what did you do to it?
We replaced a bunch of the siding in the roof and painted it and brought it back up to the standard it should be.
And what is inside?
It's storage right now for the playhouse. The next slide is Golf Learning Center. You can see up on the top right side, the, kind of where it started and some of the progress. And then as you wrap around the left side and on down, you can see some of the renovations that have taken place and how things are looking. Really looking good. You have the outside in the bays as well as the inside in the building. That's the new restaurant. The next slide is Splash Pad. Had a successful project there. As you can see on the right, children and President Johnson are enjoying it. The next one is Franciscan Recreation Complex Playground. That one, we, the existing playground's still there. So this is adjacent to the shelter. Has this brand new playground that West Peoria had input on and are enjoying. Next one's Columbia Park Improvements. This one was through a city block grant. So we're working on replacing the playground, adding a shelter to the park. As you can see, we had a public input session and had several people that got to have a, have a thought on which playground they would like to see in that area. The next one is Chartwell Park Ozley Grant Application. That one also, we had a nice public input session. And Mary Harden worked on this one, came up with this concept, did a really nice job. And we have applied for that, that grant. Next one's Riverplex Arena Floor Replacement. If you haven't seen that one, that was a significant upgrade in that facility. Next is Hisra Parking Lot. That one was a replacement of the parking lot and helped with some of the drainage issues that they were having. Next is Lakeview Family Aquatic Center Demolition. Doesn't look like much up on the screen, but it was a, a nice thing to get the, the pools taken out. Getting that one ready for the most project potentially. We have Glen Oak Park Solar Project. You see the solar panels up on that service building roof. Next one is Luthy Medical Garden Boiler. This one, the greenhouse plants and Bob are enjoying this one. So that'd be nice before it gets too cold out. Then we have the Rock Island Greenway Culvert and Path Repair at Chanute. It's one of those, a project that we did not anticipate happening, but the bottom of the culvert had rusted out. So we were able to complete or take that out. We're in the process of replacing that culvert right now. Next one is Woodruff Field Outfield Fence. Not very exciting, but important for those that use the field.
Is that the baseball field?
Yeah.
Okay.
Down there along the river. Proctor Recreation Center, we did a lot of interior painting this year. Made a big difference in terms of bringing that one up to date.
Now, that building, Proctor Center, was built in 1913.
Correct.
You know, it used to be a place where the people of the city would come there and take baths, those that live in that part of the city at that time. And to see them, to see the intricate way that we kept that, that roof is no joke either. We've had to pay money.
That doesn't expend the money.
So it's, it's sent a lot for that, for that building. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope, it's good. And then we had several paths that we replaced this year. We have Cassidy Path, Gwyn Park Path. We have Riverfront Park Path as well as Charter Oak Path. So that was a lot that people hopefully will be enjoying. So that just wrapped up. Just a quick overview of some of the different projects that we worked on and made an impact on the community.
President Johnson, if I may, just quickly, I just, really just want to say thank you, Emily, Becky, and, and the full team. The amount of presentations from a planning perspective that we've had this year, I mean, not only this year, but last year leading into this year has been rather significant. And a lot of these are projects that were not originally within our pipeline. They were really through partnerships through the city of Peoria as a result of ARPA funding to support green infrastructure and park design. So, you know, thank you to them as well. But the quantity as well as the responsiveness of our projects has been extremely impressive. You know, I asked about the Woodruff, Woodruff Park Fence because, you know, that originally was a constituent ask due to the summer, summer baseball recreation that originally helped us prioritize that project. So a lot of good things happening at the park district. So thank you all for making that happen.
Okay. So thanks, Becky, for wrapping up kind of, well, she's still working on projects still, even though it's November, right? Like, we can't even say she's wrapped up the year. But certainly a, a ton of work that has happened. A ton of work. And as we alluded to last week in operating budget conversations, when you looked at the front end of the operating budget in the district wide overview and how property tax levy is distributed, you would have seen that 30% of our property tax levy, almost 30% at this point, goes to paying the district's debt, bond debt that funds these types of projects in addition to grants, private donations, et cetera. But primarily, principal and interest payments on this debt is, it's happening in the property tax levy. As we have seen for a number of years, and President Johnson, you alluded a little bit earlier in the conversation tonight, we are, we are foreseeing in the near term that we will have even larger projects that we will need to determine how to handle as a district that will likely require additional debt issue and could have impacts to the tax levy. So my, my part of the conversation tonight is to talk a little bit about what, what items have we gone through over the last couple of years to prepare ourselves for this moment and then dovetail into what do we do next? So to help kind of build that foundation of what have we done? We approved and implemented a fund balance policy in 2023. So recall that that helped us to, to establish an idea of, you know, what is a healthy reserve? What does a rainy day fund look like? What are ways that we could use net positives in a year to assist the district for other larger initiatives? So, you know, Trustee Montez, you referenced, we have had some positive years. The, the board has taken action to use positive gains in some of those years that were not budget planned even. They just happened. Primarily, there was a lot of replacement tax that came unexpectedly. And it's more than $6 million in, in over-reserved dollars that the board has taken action to, to move projects forward. We're not just sitting on monies without really strategically thinking about what does the community need? What does the district need? So that was one benchmark policy to help us get to where we are today. We also implemented debt management policy early, earlier this year. So it was in first quarter of this year that the debt management policy was approved by the board. And at the very end of last year, we retained Spear Financial as a municipal advisor. The municipal advisor, as we proceed towards the likelihood of issuing larger sums of debt, will assist us to help plan what that tax levy implication would be, what type of debt to issue, what type of maturities to issue with that debt to help us remain financially sustainable in the long run. And certainly, the 2025 to the 2027 strategic plan has an entire section that focuses on this, on these large projects and what that may do for the district in the coming years and how to best plan for those. So today, those are some, they've been happening amongst all the other things. We have taken a lot of initiative, I believe, collectively. Board has made big decisions to put in place good infrastructure to move forward to next steps.
Thank you, Carrie.
For the 2026 bond issue, staff received more than $14 million in requests for the $5 million general obligation bond issue. Planning staff analyzed the list for both need and want and put them in, in categories. We use the following considerations. Legal mandates, which would be ADA or EPA requirements. Safety, maintenance of existing infrastructure, necessary equipment, energy savings, renovation of facilities, new development, and land acquisition. Staff also reviewed the list as we look to find other sources of funding when projects are eligible to extend the reach of our capital resources. These often include grants and donations.
Apologize for the formatting there. We had a font issue as we traded different computers for this presentation.
2026 proposed bond issue. These are examples of the items in this issue based on considerations that were previously stated. When you start at the top and you work your way down, underground storage tank at the Equipment Service Center would be a mandate. You have Lakeview Elevator and Proctor Lift Replacements, which would be the ADA requirements. Then you'd also have such things as an oval chiller replacement, mechanical and IT equipment, the Bradley Park Tennis Courts rebuild, IT room relocated, and a reco, recoat of the skylight at the Riverplex, and also pickleball lights at Glen Oak Park. Projects funded from other sources for projects that are included in the 2026 list. Going to have designated over-reserve funding for the two solar projects at the Golf Learning Center as well as Equipment Service Center that were recommended by McKinstry. We have paving and lighting over reserves to help pay for several roadway projects. Zoo memorial reserves will be used for the Aussie improvements. Grants, donations will be used for the playhouse improvements and rehab. State funds will help pay for the move of the Grand, will pay for the move of the Grand View Drive Pavilion. And then staff has also applied for the two grants listed below. The DCO Grant for Mossville Soccer Irrigation as well as for the Ozley Grant for Chartwell Park Improvements.
So we ask, included in your board's book, under the title. So, we ask, included in your board's book, under the title Capital Projects, you see the 2026 proposed bond issue list.
168, is that it?
Yes. But yes, so, that includes, that includes the list that we are asking for approval to include within the $5 million general obligation bond. Generally, we have also provided prior to this point a capital improvement plan. We talked about that in prior strategy sessions. So, the goal before we talk about approval of that 2026 bond issue is to talk to you about what is in a capital improvement plan, come to some consensus about how we want to think about that, and then move through milestones to get us to a more robust planning process for our capital projects. So, what is a capital improvement plan? A capital improvement plan is, simply put, a plan, right? It is a multi-year, sometimes it's five. We also see 10-year plans. Those are generally your, your project lengths that you see in a capital improvement plan that is a strategic planning document that not only includes a schedule, which is what you are used to seeing, but also philosophy around how we come to decisions associated with how we're going to pay for a project, where the projects are going to go, which ones receive priority, and timelines for when we're going to address specific capital needs. It is a guide, just like a budget, right? We always know that if something breaks, like the bottom of that culvert that we didn't know was rusted out, we have to work together to reallocate resources in, in order to address emergent needs. But it helps us to build out a roadmap that allows us to feel secure in the fact that we're going to address current deficiencies and future demands while also supporting some long-term goals and some forecasting that allows Carrie, allows Spear to help us to make sure that we maximize the impact of the resources available to us as we move through addressing the capital needs of our district. Key elements of a best practice plan, this is where you're going to see a divergence from what has been written in the past as part of our capital improvement plan. Please note that that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. It does. Becky and her team use a lot of these elements as part of their process. What we're trying to do is document that process so that it is clear and transparent, and everybody's using the same prioritization system. When potential projects arise, we're able to apply that set of criteria and evaluate something using the same set of metrics. That always makes for a better outcome, right? So, included in a best practice plan are things like that comprehensive scope, just trying to think about in the next five years, all the things that we think we might have to address in the Park District. I think the spreadsheet that we have been trying to, to mess around with has more than 350 lines on it. Okay? That gives you an idea of the scope of projects that we're trying to address. We want to make sure that the projects that we identify have some connection to the, the fixed larger goals. I'm going to use Golf Learning Center as an example. When that decision and that opportunity came forward for us to receive state dollars, and then you all made the, the decision to apply our dollars to meet the, the rest of the dollars necessary for that, it was around a targeted goal to diversify our revenue sources so that we could make sure that for the long term, we had ways to support the many offerings of the district. It has to be a part of our asset management plans. Sometimes we come up with really great ideas, right? We want a roller coaster in a park because that'd be super fun, kids would like it. Roller coasters aren't always safe. They take a lot of maintenance. The operating costs are really high, probably not a super good idea for us, right? Those are the kinds of things that if we all apply the same set of metrics to that, we make those decisions together. Prioritization and justification. If I, when, when our staff put forth $14 million worth of needs, right, to each of them in their individual location, and we deal with this a lot. If you are a, a person at one facility, your list of needs are the most important needs in the district, right? The charge of all of you and the charge of this team here is to look at that across those 350 lines, across the entire district, and prioritize sometimes apples to oranges to pineapples to make decisions about what has the greatest impact for the district and what is mission-driven and appropriate while also making sure that we are in compliance with every legal mandate that comes forth, every change in expectation, and that we still are prepared to deal with something if it breaks. There's a lot there, right? And that's not even the end of that, right? So, trying to be transparent in that process, trying to figure out, and Becky and her team do a fantastic job of projecting what they think costs will be, that has become more and more difficult as we continue to live in an inflationary economy and trying to project what things are going to do, even just having conversations with our zoo team last week, like, oh, well, in three years, what will that dollar amount be? And thinking about and having access to experts who can help us to figure that out, that is just as important as also thinking about all of the different tools in our toolbox. We talk about that a lot, right? We can't just say bond issue is going to fix everything. We can't just say, well, we'll issue debt, that'll take care of it. That can't be all the resources, right? When Becky went through the different, the different other sources funding, those total to almost exactly the same amount as what our general obligation bond issue is for 2026. Finding other ways, I think Mayor Ali says other people's money, right? To find those other resources to help us to do $10 million worth of capital improvements instead of five, that's significant, and it has to be a part of our larger plan. But to do that, we have to know what those sources are with some level of reasonableness. Otherwise, we're just guessing and hoping, and that's not a good plan. As we think about this, then, we have to realize and prioritize transparency. That is something that we know that you all hold at a high priority. We also have to be realistic about public input and stakeholder engagement and figure out where that fits in the best places in our plan. If we said to the general public, you want a roller coaster? Everybody says, heck yeah, right? I do too. But it doesn't meet our priorities. It's not in that list that is, makes the most sense for a park district to offer. So, we have to be really specific in where those opportunities for public input and engagement exist. Finally, we have to make sure that we honor this as a living document. It has to be regularly reviewed and updated when things change, when things break, when things wiggle. We have to make changes to that document so that it is reflective of those changing, changing circumstances, and we're able to use it as a true resource for us to think about that forecasting of how we move forward, to take advantage of opportunities, and to also be aware of constraints that might keep us from doing something else that we think sounds really fun and that we want to do. Okay? So, what we need from you is, is your feedback and your thoughts about the assignment by President Johnson. You can do this multitude of ways, right? What, what he and I have talked about is the establishment of an ad hoc committee, that short-term group that can work collaboratively with staff. Staff will draft a product, but you need to be our guinea pigs and our feedback and our editors and, and a part of that collaborative effort to develop that policy and that plan and really think about what that prioritization matrix looks like. It's really hard to do with 20 people. We sat in a room last Friday with, I think, five of us, and by the time two hours were up, we were all ready to just like pull our hair out, and we had to say, okay, right? Stop for a minute. And so, trying to figure out the best way for us to develop a linear process to build that policy out, bring that back to the larger board, obviously, through whatever process we determine, I assume, ad hoc committee to strategy to board, establish that policy. And at that point, if we wanted to evaluate the 26 bond issue as presented, we certainly have that opportunity to do that. But in order for us to stay on schedule to move our process forward in order to issue the bonds and stay on our schedule, we ask that you approve that as written or with the modifications that you see as appropriate, given what you know now. And then we'll move through the process to continue to seek other sources of funds to cover capital needs and to really build out our operational process that adheres to the policy that you help us to create. So, the first step we ask tonight is to ask you to consider approval of the 2026 bond issue as presented in your book, and then for us to have some additional conversation and get direction at your pleasure for how we proceed to the development of a capital improvement plan and an annual review process that mirrors many of the other policies that we've put in place that Carrie reflected.
So, are you saying that the capital improvement plan, once it's finalized, could come back and modify the bond priorities that we vote on today?
I am saying that you always have that opportunity to reallocate funds. I am saying that I am, I am confident in the work of Becky and her team, and I believe that the product that they have put forward reflects the most emergent and necessary needs of the district at this time. I also know that considerations may change as far as other sources of funding or other needs, but in order, I, yes, I believe that you always have that opportunity, and we're going to talk about that later in tonight's agenda, that you do have the opportunity as part of your role as trustees to approve reallocation of funds to and from projects in order to help us to get the most emergent needs done in the district as needed.
But Emily, the capital improvement plan you're talking about is more for future?
It is.
Beyond what we're seeing for 2026, on what kind of methodology we'll use in order to be able to prioritize where we need to go with the future?
That's exactly right. I think that it will reflect a lot of the, the efforts that we currently use, but those are not documented a way that we can use to work the problem together. So, what we'd like to do is build out that process based upon institutional knowledge and expertise and based upon best practice across the country, come back to you and then work through as part of this plan, building out '27 through '30 or '27 through '35 to really forecast where those things are going to fall. But in the short term, I do not believe that it is wise for us to hold up approval of the 2026 bond issue until we get this process done because we may, we may find some sticking points in our discussion, oddly enough.
One, one question on the process that you've been considering for the capital improvement plan. Have you looked at a Pew Matrix as a part of that process?
A what matrix?
A Pew Matrix.
I have not looked at a Pew Matrix.
The Pew Matrix is a business way of looking at different, you know, potential opportunities and then trying to wait what the best one is in that regard. So, that's something that's, is pretty common out there that you can grab someplace in the?
Yep, we will look that up. We have looked at government, government, Government Finance Officers Association. They have lots to say on capital improvement plans. We've looked at other park districts. We've looked at other municipalities, but to go into the corporate world is really smart.
But with the Pew Matrix, the nice thing about it is you, you put all of the things on the list, and then you actually have the ability of having whoever you're going to have in this ad hoc committee to vote on, you know, is this a one, a two, a three, or whatever it might be? At the end, you basically could add that up to say, okay, here are your higher priorities on it. So, it's just one.
We didn't call it that, but we did, we did, we have started to create some of the, some of the prioritization metrics or elements that we would consider in trying to prioritize. So, maybe we did it without knowing it, but I doubt it. We probably, I'm sure there's refinement based upon what that matrix is.
Yeah, but good judgment, you know, doesn't have to take, you know, a whole lot of wisdom from a collective. I mean, many times, just sitting down and thinking through the right things, so it's all already on that direction, so.
I, I think the biggest thing that we've found is a need for, like, some refinement because when you are trying to prioritize 350 lines, you've got to find some ways to spread out projects when there are admittedly a lot of high need and a lot of projected high need to come. How do you build out that scoring system such that you are able to find some spread across those, those many different projects?
So, what we're looking for right now is a motion to approve?
To approve the 2026 bond issue and then some direction from you about whether we establish an ad hoc committee or how you'd like us to proceed in developing that policy. Yes, thank you.
I will so move.
I'll second. I do have a few questions. Remind me when the bond issuance has to be adopted annually? Like, what's the deadline?
So, we, we issue the bonds in March. Do you want to work backwards?
Sure.
You can ju, just tell me when it needs to be fully adopted.
So, there's a technical answer. Generally, our $5 million, we proceed to engage with Bond Council in December, January, put it out to RFP in January. February is when the board approves the bond ordinance. The reason it gets approved in February is because that is the last opportunity, the first principal interest payment that gets made on those bonds is December of the year of issuance. So, to get that levy into the tax bill, it has to have it by the end of February.
Got it.
If, so, just to dovetail on that, that's the way our cycle has generally gone for the general obligation bonds that have been issued. If the larger next step question would be, does that mean that's when all debt issues? No, we could issue debt at other times, but that's our historical cycle.
Got it, thank you. So, and this question is for Emily and President Johnson, since you both spoke about an ad hoc committee. Why, why are we leaning toward an ad hoc, or why is that the recommendation? And the reason why I'm asking is because I think we can learn from this year that the full board wants to participate in every discussion.
Well, the full board will participate, and they will be, but we wanted to break it down with a few first because, like she said, so many, and, you know, and we, we want every board member to get along with each other and all. So, we want to make sure that we get it all done, and I'll choose the individuals who will start the ad hoc.
Got it.
So that we can get this process.
Yeah.
Because right now, we're, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Right now, when all of these projects that we have, obligation budget I'm looking at, there's a lot. I mean, we just got to figure out how we can.
Pay for it all.
Pay for it all, but get it narrowed down to the most, the ones that's most important and what's going to have to partnership as a whole. So, like, right now, the, not personally, I'm interested in moving on this Mossfield piece.
Yeah.
I am, I'm just, I'm, I'm transparent. I'm, I'm hiding nothing.
Yeah.
I'm going to tell you how I feel.
Yeah.
In a nice way, hopefully. But we just want to make sure the partner issue can, can do all this and get this work done and.
Absolutely.
Positively.
So, in our conversation, we found that it doesn't fit squarely within one standing committee. There are, there is work that is a part of the finance committee. There's work that is part of the planning committee. And so, it, it, it felt like the, the cleanest path to getting the all lines clear in the room was to start with President Johnson and potentially leaders of or parts of, right, a smaller group because it is, it is pretty technical to work through some of that nitty-gritty detail, bring it to the full board, and we'll, we'll probably bring it to you in chunks, right? I think that we'll work through a process together to allow us to make progress through that effort. You know, it is November, we're about to hit, you know, December, we have one meeting. So, we've got a, we just want to create some milestones and bring a small group of people together to set some goals for ourselves so that we stay on track because we do want to make sure we get, we get into spring and Becky's spending those dollars already. And if we are going to evaluate that with a new metric, we want to make sure that there is some wiggle room. I, I feel confident in her list, but to, to, to provide that opportunity, just as a quality assurance piece, we want to make sure that we have a product early enough that we can actually apply it.
Okay, I mean, I'll, I'll end on saying, I'm, I'm in support of whatever will work best. I ju, I just want to, I guess, steer on the side of caution because for the point that President Johnson just made, you know, we all have our different priorities in terms of what should be funded and when it should be funded. So, I'm interested in these best practices that trustee Slower just pointed out and whatever this working group can come up with.
Yeah, it will come to the full board.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I'm just talking, this, what, what she's asked, or what you and Emily are asking us to do is figure out a very objective model in prioritizing capital projects. And so, I'm just putting that out there at the forefront as we step into that smaller group conversation.
The reality is, we always talk about a process where everybody leaves a little bit unhappy. That's what this is going to be, right? Because it does take the opportunity for subjectivity. It's going to take some of that out of this, and that makes it, that makes it a challenge for us as we're trying to balance public input and organizational need. It is a, it's a, it's a small needle that we're trying to thread here that we're going to work together to do.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Johnson.
Well, thank you. We have a motion. I'm sorry, is my, it's something? Yes, if I'm getting ready to go to that, no.
Pertinent to the motion that's on the floor. Could we put up the prioritization that she had of the, had a list of which?
The costs?
This one? This one?
No.
Those are just some examples. There's a lot. If you go to page 167, yeah, 167, you'll see the full list. Those are just examples.
Some of the ones that are in page 167 are some more important than others.
I think that.
Yes.
It depends who you ask.
Right. Absolutely.
So, the bulk of these would qualify as that highest level need. They make the list and they actually get put in that $5 million when there is some sort of either legal or safety or ADA mandate, and some of those things cross over, right? But they're on that list because they have sort of waited their turn or they have risen to the level of need because of something that has changed in their circumstances.
Are these all number one priorities? There's not a number two or number three? In fact, what you?
Well, I mean, that arrow down, those things at the top. Well, I mean, that arrow down, those things at the top, those are the, like, those would, those would fit that criteria here where she talks about essential or that need to happen in 2026 to ensure the functioning of the district tied to a safety, legal, or ADA reason. That's that first chunk, right? Then if there's dollars left, we add in some that are necessary, but not as emergent, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. Is there some, are there things on the list here that are necessary but not as emergent?
There's very few things that made that list for you. Do you know any of them, Becky?
Are there any that you put a number two next to that's a number one?
Well, you know, like the chiller would be a number one, right?
Correct. Unless you want to come work here when it's 100 degrees, yeah. We've done that for two summers, and it's periodically, it's not good.
And then you've got the, you know, the tennis court renovation that we talked about, $700,000 at Bradley Park. You know, and that's one that I questioned. But again, we heard that it's in bad shape right now, and you don't want to have injuries, and you don't want to have other things, or, and you want to make sure that, that, that has the vibrancy that we talk about for the park. So, you know, so those are, that would be like a, you know, to me, a number two, but it's still a very, very high priority, number two. So, you know, 1A1 or 1AB.
So, so I'm just, I'm going to go there, Joyce. I'm sorry, but one example of those, like, less emergent, you know that this is coming, right? Would be that pickleball lights at Glen Oak Park. We've talked about, though, that made the list because of public input and conversations that we had and advocacy for that as a, as a service that they have requested. So that did make the need because of its cost and the impact that it could have. But that would not be qualified as a safe.
But it also allows allowing improved usage of an existing facility, so.
Sure, so it would be in that.
It's got another checkmark.
It would, it would be that tier two, right? It would not be a, that is a legal requirement to light your pickleball courts.
Right. There, there's one other item that caught my eye in terms of questioning this as a number one issue. Maybe it's safety, replacing 80 golf carts with electric. I like the idea, but is it really?
We're going to introduce you to some golfers who are driving around in really bad golf carts right now.
So, so those golf carts have been on the capital improvement plan for several years as they're now at their 10-year, 10 years of ownership in the district, and that's why they're up for to come out of the fleet for next year.
So there's a life cycle that we try to honor. And we, we, they have a trade-in value, just like when you go buy a new car. And so you reach a point where you lose that value, which comes back to help to lower the purchase price. So that is actually half the fleet, right?
It's a little less than half of our rental fleet, but those were carts that were purchased 10 years ago. And so, but in our studies, the cost of ownership, that 10-year mark is where it really starts to escalate and costs the district more money to keep them out on the course and being rented. And also, it's a reflection of customer service when our, our patrons are driving golf carts that aren't reliable or are real slow, et cetera.
It also moves us to electric.
And, and, yeah, and as, as the one, I think, only golfer on the, on the board here in driving some of those, some of the brakes on those things are very bad right now. I mean, so they're getting old. They're like me, you know, they need a little bit of maintenance once in a while. Or I need more maintenance, probably, but.
They're not speeding, are they?
No.
I'm not even sure you could speed in most of them if you wanted to. They, 10 years is a long time for a golf cart, so yes.
But if you're sitting on a hill and the brake won't lock, it's pretty tough, right? So it's one of those one. So you get to a certain point where the maintenance, you know, overcomes, you know, the cost of getting another, you know, you know, thing, it's silly. So it's the total cost of, of ownership. And right now, you get to the point at 10 years, that total cost of ownership is going to go way up if you don't replace them or put something else into the equation.
That's exactly right. It's just like your car at home, right? There's a point at which the maintenance costs more than just trying to address that in a different way. And with a long history of managing a golf cart fleet that's massive, this crew knows when that tipping point is, and it's time to, to move that.
And it goes, goes back to that balance again, you know? The golfers probably would say, why do we want to have lights, you know, at the pickleball courts? The pickleball court people are going to say, why are we going to have new golf carts? Well, I think it's just a matter, you got to.
You've just played the game that we have to play across the entire district.
So I, I think to bring this full circle, that, that goes back to the, to the questions at the top of this, right? Why this philosophy is very important for us to prioritize in terms of establishing.
Yep.
So it, I, I think at the question at hand, going back to the ask President Johnson, I am totally fine with the ask of creating an ad hoc committee. I don't.
Can we vote on the 2026 bond issue? That's the, that's the motion that's on the floor. I appreciate the ad hoc committee.
Yeah, I, I get what we're voting on. I'm just saying that at the end of the presentation, it was an ask for the board to chime in as to the approach of next steps when it comes to creating a CIP strategy or policy.
Okay, Becky, no rules this year?
Not in this list.
Oh, okay. All right.
There'll be some next time, I'm sure.
You do get a general roof repair.
By the way, just for educational purposes, this prioritization of what's critical and what's not, that is part of the Pew process. So we're doing Pew, whether you know it or not.
I didn't know it, but I'm pretty excited that we're doing the Pew process. How do you spell Pew?
P U G H. I just said to you.
You all have Googled that. I'm not on the, I'm not on the group chat.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. I'm not trying, I just want to let you know. We have a motion on the floor. Okay, was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that question, roll call.
Trustee Harret?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slover?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Thanks, Emily.
Do we have any counter? No, no counter. It's an idea.
We got one more item.
Did I?
I'm coming back over to you.
Reallocation of, oh, bond, yeah, I'm trying to, okay. Okay, yeah, reallocation of bonded.
We went out of order.
I thought we were, okay.
Sorry.
We didn't approve the bond issue.
You did, we did.
You passed the allocation of bond?
Okay.
It was the most important part.
Okay, the reallocation of bonded, bonded funds. Uh, you approve?
Yes, staffs recommend reallocating the bonded accounts that were listed below used for the Golf Learning Center renovation project as stated above for the specific expenses. So it's everything from additional security fencing around the facility to replacing the exterior large lights with new LEDs, make some improvements to the off-site parking lot for staff, and doing some upgrades to the new starter shed to make it a three-season usage for staff.
Okay, your motion?
So move. Seconded.
President Johnson, I just have a quick question. Are, are these additional unbudgeted expenses as it pertains to the GLC project?
They are, I would say mostly, yes. Like I said, the additional security fencing, we worked with the chief to kind of lay that out to try and help protect the facility. The additional parking off-site, we had not anticipated. The exterior lights, there are some new ones on the new base structure, but these will actually replace all the big ones after being out there and trying to hit some stuff. Pretty sure we need to get those switched out as well. So pretty much, yeah, I would say yes.
So, final question. How off have we been from our original budget compared to where we're landing?
I would say we're real close based on the last time, like when we reallocated, not reallocated, but when we'd asked for the.
For the additional funding? But I'm saying from the original budget.
Well, that was pretty close to the original because that was just, we'd anticipated those funds coming from a different source when we ended up having to use our own over reserves for that million dollars.
Got it.
But overall, we're pretty, pretty close to where we anticipated. We had, we ran into a few larger change orders that kind of hit with the, the north side of the building. We ran into water damage and some termite damage. That was a big one that came to the board.